All made to order and we'll begin with opening invocation.
Evening, everybody. First time here. I've never done this, so I just thought that we could open with the prayer that Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, now and forever. Amen. Heavenly Father, send your Holy Spirit this evening to all of us. Strengthen us, guide us, console us, show us the way forward. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Have a great evening, everyone.
Go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome, everybody, this evening. The people out there, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is to approve tonight's agenda. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Is there any discussion? If you're not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's the number four. We're going to approve the consent counter, the minutes of our October 22 meeting, and the payment of bills.
So moved. Second.
Motion by John, second by Doug. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. That brings us to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing on the cost assessment of the Second Street Northeast Street and Utility Improvement Project. Brian, to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Brian Drown with Bolton and Mink. As part of the Second Street project, this is the final assessment hearing, a public hearing. So have a few slides we'll go through, kind of explain the process, where we're at, kind of at the end, and then just some of the appeals and things that procedurally where we're at. So if you want to... Does that move? So again, quickly, we'll just go through the project area. Second Street, basically from project 413, north, about little over 300 feet north of Pleasant Avenue. On the east side is the school district property, and then 10 properties on the west side. Project need had older sanitary sewer that was replaced. Water main, again, cast iron, and from the 1960s, a big driver of the project, I think we are all aware of this, was getting a larger water main to the school for their fire suppression system. Some storm sewer, curb and gutter was added to promote drainage to the north. And then the streets, just to replace the deteriorated pavement and sidewalks. The process, we're following Minnesota statute, chapter 429. This project was council-directed. There was a feasibility study back in February that was approved. We had the first improvement hearing as part of the process in March, where preliminary numbers were presented and a chance for public input. Plans and bidding were approved in March, contract awarded, and then construction was completed in June through August of the summer. So now we're here with construction completed. We're at the assessment hearing, and that'll be the next, another opportunity for citizens' input. And then the final step would be, if approved tonight, or would be to adopt and then record the assessments. The property owners, their right to appeal, I guess one big thing we always like at these final assessment hearings is if a property owner were to appeal their assessment, they need to give either written notice ahead of this meeting, or by the time the meeting ends tonight. And so if you, if that's not submitted tonight, that kind of is, kind of your chance to file an appeal goes away. So if someone were to file their intention to appeal, then they would have 30 days after the adoption by city council to serve the city again, and would have to file within 10 days to the district court. So there are a couple steps beyond that, but without that first step tonight, those other others go, kind of go away as well. Back in March, we looked at the city assessment policy, which, the improvements that were being assessed to benefiting properties. City policy was 100% based on front footage for the street improvements. That was revised down to 60%, 100% of the sidewalk and then, and driveways, and then 100% of the cost for the water and sewer service replacement. So those are the, kind of the five items that were being assessed to property owners. Here's kind of a map of what applied to each property. The little blue circles are water service, the green is the sanitary, and then red being, obviously, the street was improved the whole way. The water main was essentially approved the whole way. And then the sewer ran up to the last couple properties on the north. The sewers stopped just south of them. These are the numbers from March 12th, based on an estimate at that time, and assessing 60% of the street, and then 100% for sidewalk, driveway, and the sewer services. And so, based on that estimate, we had assessing a total amount of $245,481. And we'll just compare that to where they came in. Then got bids, and then those were applied with the 60%, 100%, 100%, 100% for the sidewalk, driveway, and the services. And that dropped down to 233, 439. So the bids came in slightly less than what was the original estimate. The city did engage NAGL appraisers in April of 2024, and they submitted a report, basically as a guide for, instead of just looking at actual costs and percentages of what would be, what they call it, a limited appraisal, what would be the benefit to those properties. And they came back with these two benefits. So the single-family residential homes on the west side, they estimated a benefit of $10,000 to $13,000. And then for the school, of basically 25 to 35 cents per square foot. Of note, with the school, as they said, that could be basically applied to all the school property as the, that water line was basically an improvement to the whole school building with their, their fire suppression system. If you want to go to the next. So we looked at that assessment, benefit by the appraisal, and with where our numbers were, and your, the policy that was applied for the school property with that 25 to 35 cents per square foot matched kind of with, with the rates that came up with the project that was bid. The ones with the residential properties, we were much higher than that, that range. And so those, what we're proposing tonight is the street and the sidewalk rates were dropped down to $20 per foot and $2 per square foot. And I guess we'll, this is probably pretty small to look at, but basically, what that did is to try to bring those properties down into that range on the west side. One thing being that there's 50-foot properties up to, some people had, I think the max was about 108 feet. So it's not applied maybe linearly across the whole thing, but that kind of brought us into that range. And in doing so, the amount of the assessed, the proposed assessed amount to the property owners in total to the school and the property owners went from that $245,000 down to $177,777. So if you can go to the next slide. So most of that savings, the schools' assessment, total assessment, I think from what we presented in March, has gone down about $6,000. So there's not a big, maybe about a 10%. But then quite a bit of difference for those properties, whereas just some dropped from about $15,000 down to $8,700 with that first one. And so somewhere in the round, maybe a little bit over, not quite a half dropping, but I'd say somewhat pretty significant for those. Overall funding, the total project cost was just under $604,000. The city did receive some funding through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for the water main portion, and a 1% loan of $324,000, which leaves that $279,904 of internal city funding, of which, of that number, $170,778 will be assessed to benefiting properties, and then the rest coming from other, other city funds. So process here, the owner, if these are adopted, owner does have the chance to pay for the whole amount without incurring interest. Would need to be done before December 15th. And I guess the city policy is that they don't charge, some, some cities can charge interest even while you're going through the process. But up until now, no interest has been accruing. As proposed, this slide, it says, would be made over 15 years. That, that is a typo. That has been adjusted to 20 years, and that came from the PFA funding. Their loan amount was, was 20 years, and they've now have a policy that they're asking cities make the assessment range match with the loan funding. And then the interest rate would be applied as 3% annually over that 20 years. Again, that's tied to PFA. You guys got a loan on what percent? They ask that the interest rate on the assessments be within 2% of that. And so once they're recorded, owners can pay off increments or the, the total remaining at, at any time. And then there's also a chance, if a property owner could ask for a deferment. If the property's homesteaded, you would need to either be 65 years or older, be retired, and have permanent or total disability, or there is a deferment opportunity for National Guard or other military active duty, which the payment would be a hardship. And so those are three, three deferments that the statute allows for. Interest would occur during the, the deferment, and if there's some triggering mechanisms, if the property is sold or states settlements or change hands, or if that disability or the military deployments and such are ended, then the deferments can cease. And so that would need, again, if someone would be asking for a deferment, would need to be submitted to the city within 30 days of adoption. So that is what I had to...
Are there any questions for Brian? Council or from anybody out in the crowd?
On that, on that, when they did the appraisal on the properties...
Yep.
When that, when that was done, would that, then would that be taken into account on your taxes? Does that go to the county so that...
It did not.
If your, if your property is appraised $15,000 higher, would that go to the county so that the assessor would see it and say, oh, that's worth $15,000 more? And assess your taxes at a higher amount?
We don't send it to the assessor.
What's that?
We do not send it to the assessor.
Okay.
But are you saying, would they see the assessment? And say, oh, there's an improvement to that?
Yeah.
Boy.
I know. I suspect that the column, if the valuation, assuming it's a publishing, or a super, 20 years old. They might have something because they're careful. Square footage of the house. Other valuation stuff. And the result of the project will result in market value is going up. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, because I mean, the appraisal says it's a... If you advertise, basically, the way I took it here is if you're, that would be a selling point for your house.
In the market, terms like, you know, transaction, if you're selling your house, that counts value, but it's not that value, taxable.
You don't think?
For the purpose of calling the assessor.
Good answer.
We can get a curse out of that, if you're willing.
Just be kind of a double-dipping thing, I think. I mean, you know, kind of, kind of like you, you know, they paid, you know. I mean, the property owners are looking at a lot of money to, for the assessment, and then turn, turn around and get appraised higher too, and move, kind of.
That's a pretty nuanced question for, that I've got it. I haven't got that one. Had other assessment. I, I don't know that they would automatically say your assessment is $15,000 and just add that to, at least I would hope not.
Questions or comments?
Question on the, on the assessment worksheet I got. There is a little bit of sidewalk, I'm guessing "yes" that means square.
Gary, Gary, you want to step up here?
Could you come up to, get in there just to help us all? Thank you.
Tell us your name.
My name is Gary Paskevitz. I live on the end of the road. I got a question on the assessment I got here. I was just looking at it here. Yeah, I'm guessing it says for sidewalk, 320 SF, I imagine that means square feet. Okay, now there's way, and then it says driveway, 210 square feet. There is way, there's four times as much sidewalk as there is driveway. Why is the driveway almost as much as the sidewalk? That, to me, that's, I'm getting raked over the coals on that one. That's just a question, because there's, there's way more sidewalk than there is driveway.
These, I mean, these quantities are based on, we located them and surveyed them. Let me just, so the sidewalk, I guess that's five feet long by the whole width of your, your property and your driveway. And I don't know if it's...
It's, it's not, anywhere near that, I mean, close. Just the width of the driveway. And he might be, and then, and of course, there's a couple of ways, but there's no way you could get square feet there.
Well, I guess, yeah, we've, I, I'm, I guess I'm pretty confident with that, that number of that, that we, we surveyed that.
Well, I mean, you got to be over barrels, so, I mean, there's, you can't fight city halls, so.
Well, there is an appeals process, but I believe that that would have to be...
He'd have to start it tonight.
To have to start it tonight, yeah. If you wanted to appeal that.
Just that one, no?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just like to see where these numbers came from, all the council. I mean, if, if it doesn't, it doesn't, I'm not a map wizard, but I know enough that there's, I mean, that's not even close.
Well, I guess it, yeah, how they're calculated and how the rates are is all the concrete was, was located, added up all the concrete on the, the whole project, divided it into the cost of the concrete, and it gets a rate. And then we break out each area for each property, and then multiply that area by the, by that portion of. So you have a certain portion of all the driveway costs and all the sidewalk costs. And so I guess we've, we've looked at each, each property individually, and again, we, we located and calculated the area of your driveway.
Gary, did you want to appeal that?
I would, I would, at least, I mean, I'm not arguing anything. I just, I just think their numbers are a bit skewed here.
Okay.
I, I just honestly believe that. Because I just, I've never looked at this real closely, you know, I saw it in the beginning of the day, and I looked at it. But I see this number, I mean, I'd have to have a really wide driveway.
So Tara, I think it was either you or me that they were supposed to appeal to. So what would he, would he have to just put that in writing for us tonight? Is that what we'd have to do? So we'll try and get that in writing somehow tonight before, so we can, okay? And then we can put it down as a, as something to appeal, okay?
And, and if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll admit I'm wrong. I mean, like I said, these numbers just do not look right to me.
Okay.
So Gary, is there a question on sidewalk square footage or the driveway square? I, I would say the driveway, because the sidewalk goes the length of my house. I mean, it basically ends at the end of my house. But the driveway is just a small portion. I mean, I would give a problem with the sidewalk.
What's it say on your paperwork, Gary?
What's that?
What's it say on your paperwork? What's the ratio?
It says 210s for driveway, 210 square feet, at $10.81. The sidewalk, 320 square feet, $2.
Can we just put this information down as an official appeal and then address it? I don't leave the date, Gerald, or?
One thing that... Perhaps the driveway is...
Oh, yeah. Maybe scroll that out a little bit in there. Catch a little bit, yeah. It's 37.
Or yes, it is, it is, because it's there. Or sort of a 5-feet suite, the sidewalk through your driveway is a little bit, basically, your sidewalk is illegal somewhere.
And, and that, that's what I'm saying. I believe that, I have a problem with that. But even at that, that's, that's an exorbitant. I mean, like I said, I'm going map wizard, but, but, I mean, it seems, it seems, I mean, that's almost two-thirds of the sidewalk. It's two-thirds of what the sidewalk is. And, or the rock, like, two. And that's... I, I think I have a problem with that.
Scott, Gerald, do you, what do you think? We just want to put that down as an official appeal, or are we going to try to address that?
Do I need to write something down somewhere?
No, I think he needs to, needs to get his appeal in writing, so. You can write that, write down what you're, what you're appealing, and then we'll get that to Tara tonight, and that would be official. We'll use that as official appeal, okay?
Well, I think, yeah, if we can, I see, and just verify what the area is.
Yeah, that's, that's basically what you would do, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So what is...
Before anyone's, we know, or...
Right.
...we're investigating this.
Yeah.
Just, just, just have a double check, I mean, I mean, I, I didn't see it work.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And, and I, I just, I just saw that number, and that, that seems exorbitant.
I've been trying to look at her, you know, area of the photo, and I asked her, it's kind of hard to know exactly where the new category, or new stuff is, but... I mean, in general, the, the road is, I think, 36 feet wide, so the curb is about 18 feet out. So behind that, the driveway is about 15 feet of driveway. And then with the apron, there's a little bit more right at that curb. So I mean, 12 by 15 is 180. And I don't, I, if yours is the driveway, where we had to remove a little bit beyond the sidewalk. So we went a little bit deeper than 15 feet, so I think if it was all, all you might...
But it's not going anywhere, because you're...
That's what we said, to the sidewalk.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll...
We'll verify that based on your appeal there, then we can resolve that. Thanks, thanks for bringing that up.
Is that based on square foot or cubic feet?
Square.
Square feet.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If there aren't any others, we will close the hearing. Thanks, Brian. Move on to item number six, which is to approve, consider approving resolution 1972, adopting assessment of the Second Street Northeast Street Utility Improvement Project.
So question, Brian, can we move forward with the resolution? Or do you want a table back until after we have checks filed, or something?
I guess I would probably adopt. But I mean, you're not going to record these, right? I think we have a little bit of time. Obviously, if, if we have something that changes, then I would come back at that and change something if needed. Does that would just be one? They do, they do.
Would it be?
Just table it?
Yeah.
Would it be, you'd be able to check it by next meeting, wouldn't it? So I mean, I guess if the, is there anything that's...
I make a motion to table resolution 1972.
I'll second that.
Again, my opinion to be, if it's going on next year's pass, is be recorded. But what they, I think, you know, I'll...
Scott, we said you were going to check on it tomorrow.
Can the motion be, look as it said, can the motion be contingent upon resolution of the outstanding appeal?
You got a motion to table?
No, I know.
You got it, Eric.
I know.
Vote on it, though.
We didn't, we have it, we didn't.
All right, we have a decision that we had voted down.
Yeah, we had the...
Well, yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying, there's another way of, there are possibilities, and we have to handle this before we, before we vote on this.
That has nothing to do with, with the table.
Tableing.
All right, we have a motion to table in a second. Any, is there no discussion, any, all those in favor saying aye? Any, there's no discussion, any, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 So, the, uh, resolution actually is not tabled. The motion fails. So, um.
So, yeah, if you want to do a contingency, I think, approve the resolution contingent on the numbers for accident. I'm taking a little chat.
I'll second.
Motion by Roy, as stated, second by John, on resolution nineteen seventy-two. There's no discussion. Okay, Donald's in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Ah, just kidding, I work, uh, six to four. So, but I will, I mean, who that is. Like, that's not going after work, that's, that's just my work schedule. So.
Uh, well, uh, well, I'm just going to go there, or, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if I, if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll admit it, you know, I don't, I don't, so.
All right, thank you, Gary. Thanks for coming, that's why we have a hearing.
All right.
Item seven, which is to discuss City Code, Chapter Six, Animals. Cheryl Hayes is here to help us out tonight. Cheryl, could you come up to the podium for us, please?
Okay, you want me up in the whole thing?
Well, are you going to, are you going to be up here a lot?
But, but on this one, I just wanted to let one people, my people, that's.
Yeah, yeah, bring everything up, and, uh, you're going to add salt to people who don't have them.
Okay.
Want me to, uh, grab those from you?
Sure.
This was a stop.
So I would print it out, I only have three copies.
You only have three copies, just some information she's going to talk about, I already, I already.
Well, I just didn't want to use all my printer paper and ink, um, printing out multiple.
You can, you can share.
And I didn't know how many to share.
You guys share, and then maybe, uh.
Share, and the three of us will share it.
Yeah. I, I understand.
I'm going to hear, I can huddle for once.
That's good?
Yeah.
I've already seen this. Everybody can see, everybody can follow along?
Yep.
Okay, Cheryl, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm, I'm guess, I'm new to this, I've never done this before, so I'm not sure how you want me to start this out. Um, I'm basically here to kind of address more the issue that the city is dealing with, with the feral cat problem. And, um, I'm here as a concerned citizen, and I did write a letter to the editor, which was in the October thirtieth, um, edition. And, um, PAWS, a PAWS board member did do some research, you know, asking about other communities in the area and how they're dealing with the feral cats and so forth and so on. And, um, Wadena Motley, Little Falls, Beacon Pillage, do not have anything in place on how they deal with the situations. Um, Motley does provide live traps to people if they want to trap them, and then they work with them on a case-by-case basis. My personal experience has been, um, I live in a mobile home park, and obviously, you're going to have cats showing up, because I have cats, so they know that I have cats. One way to kind of control the population that I have dealt with, most of the animals that I have caught up there have been uh, tame enough that I, I either adopted them myself, or they were adopted out through the PAWS program at that time. Um, eight years ago, I did have an issue where there was like six to eight adults with about twelve to sixteen kittens. And, um, the adults were caught and neutered. First of all, they were tested to make sure they didn't have disease like filial leukemia, which is, cannot be vaccinated for, and it's highly contagious. So those animals were euthanized if they tested positive. They were neutered, given a rabies shot, and then released. And for eight years, up in the mobile home park, I did not really have a feral cat population problem. Now, this past spring or summer, I have dealt more with an issue, as kind of evident people in the community have also, and I think part of that is because we had such a mild winter, so more kittens probably survived litters that were born late fall or throughout the winter. Um, one of those cats had, that I know of, thirteen live kittens born in less than a year. Ten of those kittens, I was able to get, um, caught, well, actually, four of them were caught, neutered by Bridget before she passed away, Dr. King, and then went to the Babinski Foundation where they were adopted out. Um, the mother, I tried to keep track of her, so I could get her caught and get her neutered, because I didn't want any more kittens floating around, since I had such good control of the population for eight years. And she ended up getting pregnant and sick, so I actually caught her, she had six kittens. But because I was able to catch her, she tested negative for filial leukemia, um, had her, birthed her kittens, and then took them to the Babinski. So, out of the thirteen kittens she had in less than a year, ten of those actually got into an adoption program. Um, I, since then, I've been dealing, I have not been able to deal with the animals I have noticed in my mobile home park. I have seen anywhere from six to eight other ones in the mobile home park, but due to my inability to, um, physically address the problem, I haven't been able to. But that's how I've been able to deal with the, the problem in the mobile home park. Like I said, most of those animals were tame enough that they could get adopted out, whether it was through the PAWS program, or if I had adopted them, or the Babinski Foundation at this time. And the ones that weren't, were trapped, neutered, and released. But that was one way to keep control of the population by, by doing the trap, neuter, and release. I knew they weren't going to have kittens, I knew they were there, I knew they were healthy. And so I know that there were some issues about people getting upset because people were feeding them. But I do it for a certain reason. The reason I kind of do it is that's my way of trying to control the population that's in the mobile home park. If I'm aware of what's going on there, I can try to trap them, try to address the problem so they aren't reproducing, like that one year, eight years ago, where probably four adult females ended with twelve to sixteen kittens, which was like, okay, this is nuts and craziness. So, that's my take on how I deal with it. Other people, you know, based upon the article in the Staples world, are, feel like we should just run around and, and trap them and take them away, and stuff like that. And then also this website here, some of this, um, information that you received, it talks about how the trap, neuter, and release is more effective than basically trapping and killing. Because you're going to eliminate the problem by trapping and killing. They're just going to keep reproducing, they'll keep showing up, and as addressed in that one, um, section there, it talks about frequently asked questions, they talk about why that's not the best way of dealing with the problem. And I realize that with Bridget's or Dr. King's passing, that we don't have a vet in the area that addressed dealing with feral cats and doing the, the neutering and the releasing and stuff like that. And so there's more of a problem trying to find a vet that's willing to do that. And I don't know if any of the vets would be willing to say, one day, you know, like, a, a Saturday morning or something, once a month, or every four weeks or something, if they'd be willing to do something like that. There's no guarantee that who's ever wanting those animals trapped or neutered can catch them and bring them in, because that's something that can be a trick. But, you know, it's, I think the biggest problem is just trying to find a vet that would be willing to neuter these animals. And then if you re-release them, at least there's not other population kind of coming in, and all of a sudden you get a whole barrage of stuff. Um, one thing I also pointed out in my letter to the editor is the fact that some of these animals are being tossed out by family members or whatever, and instead of those family members taking accountability and trying to find other alternatives with those animals, they are leaving it to the community to have to deal with, which isn't fair. I mean, I look at it too, I mean, like this mother cat that had thirteen kittens in less than a year, it's like, I wasn't really happy about the situation. Because it's like financially, I don't want to deal with it, but I'm also not going to let these animals keep repopulating either. So I take on the task of trapping them, trying to find an alternative to deal with it, and, and expense in, um, feeding them and everything like that, and, and the time to trap them. And sometimes it's time too to figure out, are they adoptable or not? I mean, I've been lucky. Of all the animals that I've worked with in the mobile home park, I've only had that one batch eight years ago, where they were feral, except for the kittens, which most of them were caught and found homes for. But, there's, there's only one of those females left in the mobile home park right now that was part of that trap, neuter, and release eight years ago.
Well, I really thank you for doing that, but that's one area in town.
Right, I understand.
There's a whole lot of them all over the town, and I think that's the problem. I mean, I've seen a big population explosion in our area. There are cats all over the place, and, you know, and it's not fair for our police officers to, to have to be in charge of catching them and taking them to the, and I know at our last meeting, we asked for, um, a report on how much the city is paying for transportation and housing at the vet clinic for their either adopted or euthanized.
If you look at that one, um, printout here, it's on page, um, probably page three, where it kind of talks about the expense. Initially, there might be an expense to catch these animals and, and have them neutered and so forth and so on, but in the long run, it also talks about how it actually saves the community, because all of a sudden you aren't trapping multiple, multiple cats all the time. And, um, if you go through and read some of that, it also talks about the positiveness of different communities and not just little small-town staples, big communities, like, um, big cities like New York or Washington DC or whatever they mentioned here too, how doing the trap, neuter, and release has actually, um, been a benefit. And they aren't doing the expense so much. If you go through and read that, it, I, it's very good information. And like you said, it's not, it's not just my area that I'm dealing with, but this could be something that could be applied to other areas within the community. And like I said, you know, it might be an expense in the beginning, but at least it, it would control that population more. And they talk about where they, uh, in here, where you do the, catching all these animals, and they, they basically euthanize them all. But when you take a whole population of animals out of one section, you're going to have others ones moving in. So you're not really solving the problem, they're still populating.
But the owners have to start being a little more accountable.
Well, this is true.
And if you allow your neighbor or people to come in your property and feed all these feral cats,
Mm-hmm.
um, you know, just kitty corner from me, I've counted twelve sitting at one time.
Yep, and so, I mean, I do agree with you that the owners of these animals do need to be accountable and get them neutered. However, the expense of neutering is why I think sometimes people don't take care of them. That was outlined in my letter also, why, maybe some, why some of these things are happening.
Well, and our vet was here, and, you know, she doesn't, she has had her back room tore apart from some of these cats that have been brought in there, and it's, you know, she doesn't know what they have, or if they could be giving something to some that she's got in there having surgery from somebody else.
True, and, and my, I'm set up in such a way that I have two cat towers in my house. Uh, my, the animals that I catch are not brought into my, they're not, the cat towers are not in my house, they're in another, uh, kind of like a building on my lot. And the cat towers are set up in there, because I will not bring in animals into my house, for one thing, if they're not, um, friendly enough, and if they're diseased, because I will not, um, expose my cats to that. So I guess part of it is people need to have a setup if they're going to do this. You need to kind of plan ahead of time and, and set something up so in order to kind of try to help to address this problem.
Absolutely.
You know, and then this is what I have done for, like I said, you know, twenty-five plus years, is how I've dealt with the problem. I mean, I don't know how many different animals that I have caught and gotten into, like, the PAWS program, or adopted out, or, like I said, the trap, neuter, and release thing. I mean, it's probably close to thirty to fifty animals. You know, there's at one point in time, I was probably fostering up to ten to sixteen. You know, so, but, they weren't reproducing again. They just, I wasn't going to deal with that, I didn't want that expense. And I'm not one to, to actually let an animal suffer, I don't think that's right either.
No.
And so, um.
We don't have a lot of Bridget Kings that are willing to do that, and Bridget absolutely loved her cats.
Right, and with her passing, that put a kibosh on things. I mean, I was fortunate enough that this mother cat that had these thirteen leased live kittens, those four, the first four that she brought to me, I was able to get them to Bridget, get them tested, get them neutered, they got to the Babinski Foundation before Bridget passed.
Right.
And so then with this mother cat in July, being sick and very pregnant, it's like, I'm not going to let her have kittens somewhere, and she's sick. I don't know where she hides them, and all this stuff, you know, I wasn't going to do that. So I took it on, upon myself to contact the vet that I was currently going to, and she took her in, tested her, um, gave her antibiotics, gave her fluids and all this stuff. I got her set up in my house, because, in a bedroom by herself though, because I knew she was healthy, and just waited till her kittens were born. And I think they were seven weeks old, and they finally got them to the Babinski Foundation, so her and the mom. So, you know, I've had to try to find different outlets also to deal with this since, with Bridget's passing.
And Kathy has been very good with cats that come in down there that she's able to handle,
Mm-hmm.
be able to give them to farmers, give them shots, give them to farmers, give them to people that are looking, but.
Could she handle the volume? Could she handle, like, if, I don't, I understand that she wouldn't, if we were to bring cats to her, if we got, if we got some sort of a trapping program going, she wouldn't even be able to take them and do the neutering. Was she, was she able, was she willing to do that? I can't remember when she said that, I, I understand that she wasn't going to be able to help us out. Right? Yeah.
Well, somebody has to pay for that, I mean, she doesn't need to.
Well, she, she wasn't even, she wasn't even talking about PAWS, she was just saying, at, my understanding was she wasn't even able to take any volume of cats into.
The workload itself.
Huh?
Additional workload.
Right, so we have to find a vet somewhere that could, that we could, if we started it, or, then, problem, that cats end.
Yeah, and I think that is probably the biggest problem, or the biggest question right now, is if you wanted to, to try to co, control the population with the trap, neuter, and release, is to find a vet that's willing to do it. And I don't know if a person could, um, talk with vets in the area and just say, hey, would you be willing to do this? Um, one day, one Saturday a month for four hours, and, 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 you know, just have it take turns where someone would be doing it.
You know, that's the other expense, you know, somebody's.
Well, um, it's very possible that, um, the PAWS may be willing to donate money to the city to help with some of this. I mean, I can't speak for them, it's a, it's something that has been kind of tossed around. Um, it's an option. But I also thought I had read somewhere that, I don't know if you have, the council, the city has money kind of earmarked for some of that stuff? To deal with that animal control or not?
Yeah.
See, so there you got some of that money. Yeah, so maybe if PAWS is willing to, um, donate any funds to that particular account to try to help with some of these issues. Um, as I mentioned in my letter too, also, is that for people that do want their animals but can't afford to, to get them neutered, there are a couple options out there that maybe they could afford to get them neutered. And one of them was Get Your Fix in Detroit Lakes, which, um, I didn't bring any information regarding them, what their fees are or anything like that, but that's another option. Currently, PAWS might be able to help, but I can't speak definitely on how long that organization is going to be in. but I can't speak definitely on how long that organization is going to be in existence with Bridget's passing. So, I think, you know, like I said, if they're willing to donate any money, it could be to that fund to try to help at least in the Staples community.
Well, I appreciate everything you've done, you know, I really do, because it's very frustrating for, for me with all of them.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I had a former coworker talk to me saying, "Hey, I got these cats that showed up last year." And I said, "Well, okay, da-da-da." I gave her information and stuff too, and she sent me a picture of the, she's got twenty-three animals that she's dealing with, and I'm going, "Oh, my goodness, that's really gotten out of hand." But yeah, so, I think the hard part is trying to get control of the situation. But once you get control of it and you keep following through on it, I think it will help. I know that one of the complaints too, that was in one of the articles, where people were upset about the fact that cats using sandboxes or whatever and so forth and so on, as litter boxes, well, they're, they're going to do that. But also in this printout that was given, they talked about how to deeter some of that bad behavior in like sandboxes or gardens or things like that. Now there again though, too, community members need to decide if they want to follow through on that. You're just, you're not going to get rid of cats. They're nomads. People come in and they drop them off or throw them out the door. So, it's, it is a very frustrating situation.
Well, but there's been a big acceleration of the number of cats too.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And they're ripping up, you know, for example, in my yard, they rip up my planted flowers. At night, I'm not going out there and looking for that. I would be on the other side of this whole deal. Because I think we may neuter a bunch of them, and that may help for a while, but then a whole bunch of other ones are going to be coming in and populating. So I think it's a never-ending battle.
Yeah, but it would be less of a battle if you have less, less of them reproducing. And it's hard, and you're saying they're digging in your planters? How do you know it's not a skunk or raccoon looking for grubs or things?
There are no skunks and raccoons where we are.
I would.
I haven't seen the cats in there doing it.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not accusing something that I haven't seen.
Right, but I'm just saying.
There's multiple different ones. It's not just one cat that comes and does it.
Well, they're going to trap them and whatever, and they get, you know, if they are healthy and they can get neutered, and maybe Dr. Kathy can find them, a farmer to go to, that would help maybe with your problem. I mean, I don't know. I just know too that I've noticed more of an increase in the population in the mobile home park that I'm in. And I think part of it is because of the, we had such a mild winter. I think that's part of our problem. Because I controlled the population in the mobile home park for eight years. And anything new that did come in that, in that eight-year period, I kept tabs on them, trapped them if I could and whatever, so that I didn't have this population explosion.
But that fifteen hundred isn't just for cats. It's for dogs and two, the fifty, yeah.
And that goes when they get picked up and taken on there.
Well, I would assume that they do get picked up. You know, I would say the majority of that money are for big bird animals that are not picked up and paid for by their owners and.
Right.
You'd all that dollar bet.
Which isn't probably cheap, I'm sure.
But, you know, I think you want Cheryl to come, and obviously, I think Cheryl, you said you work on PAWS.
I am a current PAWS member or board member.
Yeah.
But I'm not here as a board, I'm not here representing PAWS.
But, you know, just to, you know, offer the counsel, a little bit of, you know, perspective, a different approach from, you know, the organs that Ken talked about. You know, just what everybody have, have all information, you know, different points on it, different approaches.
Yeah, this was great information. Thanks for coming in.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get this thing worked fast down.
Well, we won't have any more discussion.
I just wonder where Mary was when I was on the police department, and I was picking up them cats and all that stuff. Nobody felt sorry for me.
Well, we feel sorry for you now.
Well, I mean, we've got a program, we've got a program. That this has been gone through, probably started back in two thousand somewhere. It, we, and the Staples Police Department, since I was on it, was always designated the Animal Control Officer. It's, I think, in the ordinance or wherever. It's, it's in the policy manual, it's in the ordinance. And, and then sometime in two thousand, we, we bought, I think, two traps for the police department, where people requested them. And they, they would trap the animal, call, and we'd take them to the vet. There is a guy down on the end of Sixth Street, and I know that I personally picked up probably twenty cats from him back in probably two thousand and ten in that area. I, I mean, I think we need to look at a permanent solution, not just a, something that's, you know, we got, it's, it's a tough problem, but I think that the, this scenario that we had working was what, what we've got right now, that worked.
But I think the owners have to have, take responsibility.
A lot of these cats don't have owners.
But that's our, that brings us back to the issue, is people taking ownership of these cats. Nobody's doing it.
If I have a bucket out in my yard with cat food in it, and I have ten, twelve cats in that, eating out of that, then that should be considered my cat and my responsibility. If it's not, quit feeding it.
I think that, are we modifying the ordinance to make?
Well, we brought a, you know, a proposed communication to the artists or the council just to look at this, kind of one piece of the approaches that are out there. But, you know, I think by the marks of the tier one, you can't trap a bad one.
No.
You can't trap a bad one. You know, the trap neutering release, you know, one thing that that does is, they form, you know, they have their colleagues to keep the cats off. At least if you have, you know, the cats that you have are healthy and not reproducing, they keep other, you know, cats off. You know, but, I mean, you can find stuff out there on farms, both spectrum groups, you know. You know, it's like, and it might, you know, the whole point of the conversation today is to get a different perspective of what we talked about previously.
Yeah, because I mean, I honestly don't know how long Kathy's going to continue to have some of these cats. You know, I mean, some of those cats that were brought in weren't very good looking.
That's, that's also a consideration. City is, you know, Staples Vet Clinic is acting as a power, and they don't have to.
Right.
We appreciate them doing that. It's convenient, it's, you know, all that. Fifty feral cats off there every night.
Well, yeah, it's not, like she said, the cats that are being brought down there aren't cats that are being held in and brought in. They're cats that are in a trap that don't look good, and they're not very happy to go where they're going. So it's, it's, there's, you know, it's.
Well, she doesn't know whether her healthy population is either.
Can't blame her for that, I guess, but. Yeah, I think it boils down to ownership. And how do we determine whose they are? If you're outside feeding them, they're yours.
Yeah, but then they still have to do something about it.
Can't forget, and I'm not, I'm not an advocate for cats, but, believe me, but, you can't forget, those cats control other things too. They're, they're, they're part of the ecosystem. They, 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 and, and I'm, it goes back to, like, there was, we got stray cats around our house in our area. Well, one of them got two striped gophers, a gopher, about ten mice. And so if you don't have some of that, and I realize it's gotten out of hand probably, but if you don't have some of that, other things are going to take over. And then we're going to be having that conversation. And so, and I brought up one time about bird feeders. And I was serious, but like, you got people feeding birds. Cats eat, cats eat bird feed. It's got suet and all kinds of stuff. It goes on the ground, cats eat it, chipmunks eat it, red squirrels eat it, squirrels eat it. Probably more, more other animals eat bird seed than the birds do. And so, and you're going to have a population explosion of that. So, you know, it's, our system up until recently seems to have worked. We had people that wanted, you know, like Joel was here that night. I don't know if Joel ever got traps from the city and trapped cats, or if he, you know, I don't know, he didn't mention that he'd done that. But I know that the one guy up on North Sixth Street that I picked up at least twenty cats from and took to the vet clinic, I know that that guy had huge success, and he was more than happy to deal with it. And I hauled him in my patrol car down to the vet clinic. Never an issue.
I've trapped seventeen of them in my area.
Yeah?
That's way too many.
You've trapped seventeen? In what period of time?
I'd have to look back. I would say a month.
No!
Just, just this summer.
What'd you do with them?
Yeah, what'd you?
They went to the vet.
To our, go vet?
Yeah, and I think out of those, she was able to get one into somebody for a farm cat in the barn. And she said, that's when she, I mean, she actually kept my trap as hostage for me to come and get it, because she said, "Mary Jo, I can't keep doing this." Because, I mean, some of them, their hair was falling out. I mean, they'd come and pick it up, the cops have to wear those big glove, and they're trying to get their hands there, they're, I mean, they're not being taken care of. You know, and that's one thing, you can have a cat, or two, or three, whatever you want, but you need to take care of it. It's like your kid. You need to take care of it.
You trapped seventeen, sir? And hasn't really, hasn't changed your situation?
No, because now, there's, there's babies in there too. So hopefully things will change at where these ones are coming.
Well, they're coming out of that house, and I, I suggested to Gerald that we call Humane Society. The house apparently is full of cats down there. And these cat hoards, you see it on TV. I just saw one probably within the last month on TV where they would end, Humane Society, cleaned out a cat hoard, and, and they had like a hundred and some cats in this one house.
But do they do that if nobody's living in the house?
I'm pretty sure they will, yeah, because he's, he was bringing the cats there. He was putting the food out, according to you anyway, that's what he was doing.
You drive right by there.
But he was, I'm just saying, and, and he, so, he's, that's a cat hoard. It's in a house, it's in town, in a house, all the Humane Society. Well, apparently they only do it in Minneapolis then, where they can get the news people to come and shine light on them, because that's what, that's where it was, down in the metro area, so.
Well.
We will continue this discussion.
Are the traps available to be had by, by local residents? Are they, do we still have traps, or do we have anybody that would?
I think we have one. You said I have two.
I thought at the last meeting, the officer that was here said that you're not picking them up and putting them in the cars, because then you spend the next two hours cleaning your car.
I thought he said they do, but they don't want to.
I think they stopped.
Yeah?
That's what he said, stopped.
The ordinance, though, the police department is the animal control of the City of Staples. I don't think that's an arbitrary issue, I think.
I don't know if Chief was here that night or not, but I know I'm to his. Enough discussion on that. Move on to Page Eight, Consider Approving Resolution Nineteen Seventy-Three, Accepting Donation.
Is this, is this gambling money?
Make a motion to accept the donation from Coke Industries.
Motion, John, second, don't, any discussion. You're not all in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, motion carried. Motion Number Nine, Consider Request By Auto Taps Unlimited To Conduct Bingo And Raft December Fifth, Twenty Twenty Four At Ex Burger Company.
I think this is probably the fourth or fifth year that I've.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Doug, seconded by Blake. This is very discussion. You're not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, aye, motion carried. That brings us to Page Ten, Consider Engagement Of Carlson S B For Twenty Twenty Four Audit Services For The City Of Staples.
Most of the services, uh, three, it was three years ago, we switched to Carlson S B. We just continued doing audits, that, that everything, all of it, Carlson's especially lower. So this is basically a better for a year. Basically, twenty-eight thousand one hundred, which is something like twenty-five five hundred, but actually plus the other two, yes, there were three years ago, so. I recommend a review of our agreement with Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John. This is a great discussion. You're not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried. That moves us on to committee reports. The first one is Staples Economic Development Authority.
Number One, I'll be real brief. Last meeting, the only action that was taken was that the EDA agreed to support the Todd County Development Commission for fifteen hundred dollars, which is what they had done previously. So that was good, and there was a presentation by Melissa Wyman on some of the work that they're doing. And that was good. I gave a presentation on finding an economic niche for the City of Staples. And I'm really happy with the discussion that's come out of it, including a really good conversation I had today with a new building owner here in town who invited me to sit down, because he wanted to make sure that what he was doing with his building was contributing to the larger goals of the community. And that's exactly the kind of thing that I was hoping would happen when I set out, was not necessarily that I would be choosing what the community's goals were, but that we would be thinking in a broader sense about what kind of a community do we want to be, rather than sort of being piecemeal in our efforts. Not that that's the worst thing, right? Just that if we can have each of those things compound on top of each other, the better off that we'll be. If anybody on the board wants a copy of the presentation and the document that I put together for the EDA, I'd be happy to provide it. Just let me know. The seventh invoice came in for the Small Cities Development Grant today. So that's still going really well. We've now had quite a few of the residential owner occupied projects underway. As of yet, we've not been billed anything for any of the commercial spaces that were approved. So I'll let you know when that happens, but a lot of the residential ones are moving forward, so that's good. Um, and then I will have a, a proposal for how we can use the balance of the Blenheim Grant, um, that I will be bringing to the E D A, uh, at their request. That was one of the things that they sort of tasked me with, was, um, helping determine how we want to spend the remaining fifty thousand dollar balance of the Blenheim Grant, um, which as you'll recall, we have until, uh, September of next year to deploy, so it's not totally urgent, but, uh, working on it, so, any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
That brings us to Public Works Commission, Scott.
At our last meeting, uh, we lacked a quorum, but, um, we still do have some business that, that, for the City Council. The first item is, in, uh, next year's budget, we have, uh, what we call a vac truck approved. We have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this, which would be used in all, potentially in all four departments. Um, its primary use would be to clean, um, uh, sewer mains. Does this by sending a water jet down the main, and then as that's happening, it sucks it out. This would take away some contracting expenses, you know, put the labor on our own staff, but again, take away the expense of the contractor. So, our guys happened to, one of our guys happened to find one on Facebook that's in Motley, and since, say, on, uh, he's got it for sale for forty thousand dollars. So we are requesting a budget adjustment where we can take that out of the budget for this year and, uh, instead of waiting until next year and taking the chance of it being lost. Our guys have looked at it, um, to the best of their knowledge, it's, they think it's a good unit, and they're having, uh, somebody who knows a little bit more about this go with them tomorrow to look at the, uh, the truck, they're, they're pretty confident it's in good shape, but the, uh, the vacuum unit that's on top or on the back, they're gonna have somebody that's a little more qualified look at it tomorrow with them. So we're requesting a budget adjustment. Looks like, if you look on the back sheet, that, uh, it's ten thousand dollars out of each, each, um, fund to pay for this. The, the, those, uh, commission members that were there, um, did recommend that we go ahead with this, but we did not have, like I said, we did not have a quorum.
Oh, just curious, how old is that truck, or how?
Uh, I, I don't have that right off the top of my head, but I, it's, it's not, um, I, I want to say it's like a ninety-eight, but I don't, I, I can't remember right off the top of my head.
Uh, I just. From Arizona?
Yeah, it did, yeah, it did come from Arizona, yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, we ended up with that good street sweeper.
Well, that's the, the guys that, uh, that operate the street sweeper will be operating this truck too, so they're, uh, yeah, they're, they're looking it over pretty good, I think.
Okay.
So, and the money that we, you know, that we have included in the twenty-five project for this was for a used, you know, a used, uh, unit as well, and, uh, so what, what we would, what we're proposing, instead of waiting for twenty-five to get this, we'd get it in twenty-four utilize the twenty-five, you know, the dollars, whether it's twenty-five or plus, those reserves. It's a cost savings.
Make that motion.
All said. Motion by Roy, second by Mary, to approve a budget adjustment as, as described. Is there any, uh, any discussion? Here now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carried, thanks Scott.
Uh, next item of business is that, um, Chad Longbella has, uh, expressed interest in serving on the, uh, Public Works Commission, and, uh, again, those members that were there recommended that he be approved, uh, now we're asking for the council to approve his appointment to the commission.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Motion, John, second. Motion, John, second, Doug, uh, any discussion? Mary now holds a favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side.
Last thing I have is that we were denied the, um, our second application for the GRIP grant, which is not that big of a surprise, I think we'll probably switch direction and look at some, at some of the projects that we had planned for this, and then, um, look at doing them in-house. We'll update more in future meetings, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions?
I have one question, uh, just checking in on those city planters.
Yes, they'll get them off this week, they did drain them.
Okay.
A while ago, yeah.
Is there any plans to utilize to give them during winter?
No, after kind of speaking with most of the guys that drive the plow trucks, they prefer that they are not on the streets for summer removal, and I figured that's probably a good idea. No. So, yeah, we, yeah, discussed that last spring, I think, so.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, no.
Move this to open forum, is there anyone that'd like to speak, take an opportunity to speak at open forum? If not, we want to see you next for your report.
Uh, just a couple items, uh, for next meeting, uh, value new covenants for new, uh, first edition value new. I have that on preliminary, you have a, we give them the version of it, uh, in time, if you can, just kind of off the, uh, holdings to check the secret card, so we'll meet that next time, uh, but that just adds kind of the extra details of, uh, assurances for the property, so, 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 have that to you, and then, uh, at our next council meeting, we'll also have cannon sorbents for the council the night before, at five, it's one, in public area, so many aspects, uh, to the council, so. I'll give us back to you, you need to do the first reading, sixth, second reading, and first, December, uh, we'll have that all fixed for the first. All fixed in. So, I have, if you have any questions.
There are. Motion by, uh, Roy, second by Mary, to adjourn, all those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, adjourn.